We should be ready to go. Tony, I think I see you on, right?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and start then. We have a quorum. All the members of the committee are present. So we'll call the meeting to order for Rules and Open Government Committee, the whole. And again, pursuant to the Governor's executive order, this meeting will not be physically open to the public, but we have hopefully created ample opportunities for the public to be able to wait, though they are limited. We are going to begin then with a review of the final agenda for April 21st. And I guess I'll note to the maker of the motion, we have several adds to that agenda. It includes an item relating to the urgency ordinance for temporary rent freeze, the homeless housing assistance and prevention grant from State California, and the temporary shelter operations and services for COVID response. And yet another item, these are all COVID-related. Actually, this one is not. Substantial amendments to the FY 2015-20 Consolidated Plan and Interaction Plan. So our request to make a motion. And I guess specifically on that ad sheet, the HAP allocations. Rick, I just got out of a conversation. I'm not sure if Rick or Ed's with us. Yeah, I just got a conversation with Jim Orpall. He said that we need to go back to council for the appropriation. I thought we already had authority from the council for the appropriation of the use of the HAP money. What's changed?
You know, that one, I think I'm going to have to leave up to housing. I don't know. Because I had been following the HAP application.
Okay, well, maybe check in offline.
Hey, Sam. So I think what it is, is the council authorized that use for that purpose, but there wasn't a specific appropriation established. So I think that's what it is.
Yes, unfortunately, the council has to appropriate the monies. They may have approved using the funds, but there was no actual appropriation done.
So it's a decision between authorization and appropriations?
Correct.
Afraid so.
All right, well, here we go. We'll start with pages five and six. Are there any suggested changes to those items? Okay, and then pages seven and eight. Any changes? I just want, I'm just looking at 2.9, recognizing the huge gap we're going to have to fill in budget. I'm curious, David, is this funding, you know, from the BRIN grants? I know we get this every year. I imagine there's lots of restrictions around it. It's typically used for material and not ongoing, for example, for staff. But just knowing the holes we got, is there an opportunity for us to take a look to see if this might be more flexible for us to be able to fill gaps we're going to have in our police office, police budget?
Yeah, we can certainly look at that. I think what you said is accurate in terms of kind of some of the limitations, but certainly we can look at that.
Okay, we'll explore it more next week. Pages nine and 10. Okay, those are all the items. We have one member of the public would like to speak with an area code of 510, ending in 8794.
Hi, hi, this is Blair Beekman. Hi, thank you for your words about two point, item 2.9. To speak to items. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Okay, if I can start again, to speak to items 2.8, 2.9, and 3.3 to be deferred. Item 2.8 is about JAG grants, or National Security Federal Funds for Local Projects, and that can often leave people feeling somewhat uncomfortable. In item 2.9, and is this going to be with its repayment, repayment issues immediately following the JAG grant? Is this trying to address the JAG grant project at all? I've been reporting and thanking city government here at virtual city council meetings and public comments for the past few weeks now about good accountability practices with the recent city government public record. Does city government or the mayor want to begin to more openly describe exactly why the need for more technology surveillance at this time? And why item 2.3, the current Wi-Fi program, has been deferred until August? Besides possible new Wi-Fi, what other surveillance and technology are you currently placing within street light poles at this time of less crowded streets and pavements? And why does city government have a recent council item for the purchase of $200,000 plus in new streetlight poles? To conclude, can the mayor and city government be willing to be more open about this subject? Can I be able to ask these questions to people within city government and be given honest answers? And finally, what right does a local city government have at this point in our lives to not have to openly describe at least some of the contents of these projects if asked in decent terms by everyday people of the community? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speakman. Hey, Dave, on 3.3, this is the community Wi-Fi strategy update. I recall last week we discussed this, and I think Councilmember Arenas raised some of these concerns. And I thought that we were going to recast this rather than as a Wi-Fi strategy update as something which is just going to focus on the many council members' concerns around how we're going to try to help serve children and low-income families who don't have digital access during this time when they're required to engage in distance learning. I think you're on mute right now, Dave.
Yeah, I should have flagged this. So what we plan to do is provide an update under 3.1 on kind of that, that, that item you just discussed in terms of how are we going to help with, you know, addressing the gaps that exist in the school system and all of that. So we plan to address that in 3.1. That's different than this item, though. And so, you know, we could attempt to recast this or just do as I suggest in terms of providing that update under 3.1.
Okay, that's fine. I assume that's okay with the committee, but we'll certainly hear from my colleagues. Any, anybody want to weigh in on this agenda? Okay, we have a motion, I believe. Is that right?
Not yet. I can make a, make a motion.
Mayor, this is, this is Ed, you know, and I, unfortunately, I have the task of giving you details that maybe you don't want to know, but I have to give it to you for full disclosure. If you look at the ad sheet, the ad sheet includes, hopefully, most or many of the items that were approved yesterday. However, we're still looking at some of the other items because various memos were approved yesterday, and they are looking at various issues dealing with tenants. And as Rick mentioned last night, some of the protections are for all tenants in the city. Some of the protections only are allowed for rental restricted units. And so we're still in the process, and hopefully by Friday, we'll be able to give an update on that agenda that details which items of the various memos will be moving forward for next Tuesday and which items may not be able to move forward until later. There were a variety of comments in the memos about late fee waivers. There were comments about actions with regard to task force. So we're going to look at that. And then my last comment is simply, and I, and I know this is probably not going to be helpful, but the urgency ordinance will require eight votes. The regular ordinance only requires six. So if we, the council wants the ordinance to become effective immediately, it will require eight votes on Tuesday.
Great, thanks, Ed. And I think we anticipated, there may be some legal issues with several of those items and say that, you know, it may not move together all at once. We may just have a piece of it that we can enact and others that we would not and we can certainly move at the pace that seems appropriate. Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought also, as you mentioned earlier, I thought that we were going to continue with the community Wi-Fi strategy update as 3.3 on its own as it's something that I think a lot of our stakeholders, our elected officials, our county superintendent, there's quite a bit of swell in interest in, in having this heard. And I'd like for us to, to hear maybe some of those comments as the whole council, because I know that in the COVID update, we can't really hear public comments. And so I think for all of us to be on the same page and for us to hear what the needs are out there. Obviously, we know what the problems are, pretty standard. But I think this is also maybe the beginning of some discussion in terms of what the solutions could be in getting us all on the same page.
I think that's fair enough. Will we word this or re-retitle this? And then have it as a standalone item so that it can allow, you know, if that's, if that's what's needed, we can allow that discussion and that comment that is not, you're right, not allowed under 3.1?
Okay.
Great. I appreciate that.
And Vice Mayor, would that be incorporated in your motion?
Yes. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Tuesday, April 21st agenda with the modification that we just discussed, in addition to a sunshine waiver for an ad sheet for four items on that ad sheet.
Great. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Councilmember Kemos?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the guidance from our legal team here as, as it affects the, the motion that was made yesterday, which actually didn't have eight votes, it had seven.
The action from yesterday was direction to come back with an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance, and to take other actions. So yesterday's direction only required a majority.
And that I understand. But, but so putting it forward as an urgency ordinance may not go through if my, if my number counting is correct. So what happens then?
At that point, you can adopt the regular ordinance. However, that ordinance would not take effect immediately. It would take effect in the ordinary course, which is a second reading and then 30 days thereafter.
Okay, so it would take another 30 days to.
After the second reading, after the second reading, which is basically like 38 days.
So it'll be well past.
Come back the next week.
Uh huh, okay. And what am I to understand from your guidance as, so what you're saying is we may end up be having something by Friday, maybe, to be voted on on Tuesday?
No, we will have, we will have, we will be posting all of the ordinances by Friday. We will have both the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance that will contain most of the items that were approved at yesterday's council meeting for direction that we include in the ordinance. So you will see the actual urgency ordinance, you'll see the actual regular ordinance, you'll see what it is that you will be adopting. You will also have a memo from this, from our office that indicates what items are not included that still need additional work. So by Tuesday, you will see what action you're taking. By Friday, you will see what action you're taking. I just needed to clarify that because one of them is an urgency ordinance under the charter, you need to have a vote for the urgency. However, you could, with a majority of six people, adopt a regular ordinance with everything in there. It just is delayed.
I understand. Well, I know that, I know some of us who voted against it wouldn't mind doing the extension of the rent eviction moratorium. Is that something we could separate out, or is that, is that, has to be under the same urgency ordinance procedure?
Well, the direction from our office was, was to move forward with what was approved yesterday. That's something for the council to discuss at the council meeting, to the extent the council's.
So it's all, it's all going to come together. And at city council, we may, we could, well, if, if we have another votes, maybe separate out the two things and then so that we can have some things moved through as an urgency and some things may not move through as an urgency?
That's, that's up to the council, yes.
Okay, thank you for your guidance.
Yeah, and so essentially, we may move forward with whatever was agreed to last on Tuesday, or it may be modified based on obviously a requirement of eight votes. Is that fair to say, Ed?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Other members of the committee like to speak? Nope. Okay. All right, then let's put on Vice Mayor Jones's memo, or motion, rather.
Who did you pick? Cut out.
I said Arenas.
Oh, yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kemos?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Locato.
Hi.
Great, thank you. Let's move on then to the calendar for April 28th. Start with a review on pages five and six. Seven and eight. Any changes there? Nine and 10. Pages 11 and 12. Okay, we'll go to the public. Let's see, anyone indicating they'd like to speak? So we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda for Tuesday, April 28th.
Second.
Let's vote.
Arenas?
Yes.
Davis?
Yeah.
Kemos?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Mayor Locato.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
The public record is item E. Mr. Pinkman?
Second.
Hi, this is Blair Beekman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. The public record. To continue my words from the previous item of council agenda approval, I would like to thank and all the people who wrote letters this week to the public record for the issues of surveillance technology and Wi-Fi being placed in streetlights at this time. This has taught myself a lot and that I'm not so alone in the work and how a technology future for a local community can be a more open, shared, and sustainable experience based on the positivity, positiveness of life and good community practices. Thank you.
Thank you. On Councilmember Kemos's motion, let's vote.
Mayor, I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, give me.
I just, there was a lot of emails sent about this 5G technology stuff, and it's not just from Blair this time. Are we, are we, like, do we have a reply back to these emails? Or are we just not addressing them at all, or is staff saying, hey, this is something that was passed through the federal government and, you know, it's, because I know my staff has a kind of a cookie cutter comment that we mail back to these folks, because I don't want people to think that we determined that 5G is, is mandated in any way. Is that, is that something that staff does with these public comments?
Well, yes, Councilmember, actually, I think we did, and I could be wrong. I think we did develop some messaging that would help with responding to some of the inquiries that we were getting. But I'll loop back and, and make sure that we have that and provide that to you all, because it's, it's been a little while. So, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I'm just, in response to some of these comments, you know, I think, anyway, whatever you feel about 5G, I think it's, it's good to have some, to some kind of guidance to the community. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. I assume you're relating to the public health concerns about it and the federal preemption over that issue.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All right, let's vote on Councilmember Kemos's motion.
Arenas?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Kemos?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mayor Locato?
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, we're on to the consent calendar under item G. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Arenas, second from Vice Mayor. Is there any objection to the passage of that consent item? Okay, I hear none, so that passes. We're on to item two, which is modifying the Sunshine Resolution and procedures for agenda items submitted after the Rules Committee. Appreciate the memorandum from my colleagues. I think we probably share a common concern. I've submitted a memorandum as well dated yesterday. It doesn't appear with my name. It just says memorandum in case people might have missed that. So I appreciate the suggestion. I just want to throw out or articulate, since mine was filed a bit late, what I'm attempting to do here. The idea is to allow the city manager and staff to continue doing what they're doing, be able to put items on the agenda as we'd all agreed, as they need to, to move forward with urgent items relating to the COVID emergency. The constraint for council members and me would relate to simply following procedures that existed previously, not just under what's mentioned there, which is the Sunshine Resolution Number 77135, which rely, requires concurrence of myself and city manager and city attorney to be able to move forward with things that are raised after the Rules Committee, but still more than 72 hours prior to the hearing. But that's also the procedure we follow, for example, with urgent legislative items, as I understand it, when things are coming up in the legislature and we just need to move quickly in order to get a position. Again, there's typically a concurrence. I don't think there's ever been a disagreement about that. And then it goes on to the agenda, and again, the council has to authorize the addition by two-thirds vote. So I'd just like to be able to keep that emergency provision in place in case something does in fact come up. Councilmember, see, I don't see any, Councilmember Davis, I see you raising your hand, but real hand and not your virtual hand.
I didn't get to the part of the screen, so it was just easier to do it on this.
Okay, good.
Just a question about the, about your item number one, Mayor. And I don't know if it's for you or for Dave. I guess I was kind of under the, the impression that things could come up, and we have seen that things come up, you know, Sunday night, Monday. I don't know if those things would actually require action, or if it's just to give us, you know, we, we always have now. We always have 3.1, and it gives us a COVID update. But the only, the reason I'm asking is, is 72 hours enough? Would we, for us to be as nimble as possible, would we just do a special meeting if it was something that required action? If something came up after Friday night, what do we do?
Yeah, that, I might need Ed's help reminding me.
Could I, that first paragraph, I think, is just a restatement of the current rule.
Right. So that's a, that's a rule that the city has imposed on itself, that nothing later than 72 hours will be put on orders of the day. However, the Brown Act allows urgency items to be placed on there within 24 hours of an actual meeting. So the city has imposed that on itself with regard to the 72-hour one. So if something came up on a Saturday or a Sunday, it could still go on orders of the day as an emergency, which would require eight votes under the Brown Act. The 72 hours is what the city has imposed on itself with regard to orders of the day.
So Councilmember Davis, it sounds like you could have room if you wanted to shorten that 72-hour period to, you know, to comply with the Brown Act.
So, yeah, so that's my question, and it's more, I understand that there needs to be time for item number two for Mayor, you know, things from the council members coming up to have the city clerk do it. I understand the 72 hours there, and I think that makes perfect sense. I'm just wanting to make sure that we have the flexibility that our staff needs if, if, in the, in this time of emergency, right? If, if 72 hours, Dave, is not enough, but the 24 hours of the Brown Act is what you think is best, because we need to be nimble, especially as we have more information coming in about funding and that kind of thing, if we need to accept something within a certain amount of time. That's, those are the things that I was thinking about when, when we crafted our memo and didn't make the 72 hours, because we actually had talked about that and then decided not to, because we wanted to give staff that flexibility.
Yeah, and I think the way we've been thinking about it is that we were, we would always attempt to adhere to the 72-hour approach, but understood that if we needed to put something on over the weekend, we could, and Ed just described that path forward. And so it would be, seem very rare that we would do that, but there, there is a path forward for us to do that, as I understood it.
Yeah, in the rare situation where that would occur, to the extent they did, it would simply go on, on orders of the day as an emergency, asking that you waive your 72-hour and allow that to go on, which would be part of the motion for the eight votes.
Okay, so it would just include a sunshine waiver, and that's.
Right, and, and it could move forward since it's just a resolution, right? It's just a resolution that the council, the council itself could waive that requirement when it decides to bring that on as an orders of the day emergency.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Any other questions? The hands may not be working, so if you raise your physical hand, I might see you. Councilmember Arenas?
Can you review, Ed? What, what is an emergency constitute? I mean, is it defined in a strict way?
And I don't have it in front of me, but it's usually a health and safety issue. If something is related to health and safety, and we can articulate the health and safety emergency, then more than likely, we will do it. And that's why I think the 72-hour has always worked under the cities, because it's, I think the emergency is a little different under the city's resolution, whereas the Brown Act requires it to be a health and safety issue.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pinkman?
Oh. Hello, hi, public comment?
Yes.
Thank you. It seems to me, in my humble opinion about this situation, if I can try here, it seems sections 2.3, Part 2B, Subcategory 4, and Part 4A, Subcategory 1 of the Sunshine Ordinance was created clearly to allow a city government the right to add items in an emergency situation. So with council approval, no, to continue, the deeper questions here may be, why did the mayor feel he possibly had to suspend the Sunshine Ordinance in the first place? As the mayor and city council can already be allowed to bring items almost immediately to council in an emergency, with my example, legal examples of the Sunshine Ordinance are shown above. I think it brings up a very serious issue that for all the love and care recent city government and community have towards human rights and civil rights with housing and, and tenant issues, there is close to an almost arrogant lack of care, a proactive, progressive engagement to help address what can be better local practices of accountability and openness. I hope we can really work on this issue in the remaining time of the mayor being mayor. And with what we've been experiencing this time, I hope the ideas of accountability, you know, the ideas of peace, and we can work towards those things. Good luck in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to the committee. Councilmember Kemos?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm reading your memo, and I'm not exactly sure about the, you know, I get the first part one, and I'm not understanding part two. Isn't that basically leaving everything the same way it currently is under our sunshine waiver rule?
Well, there are two things, yes and no. Well, first of all, no, the, the, what is different is, let me back up, depends on what you use as your base. It is largely the same rule that existed prior to the COVID emergency. Then, as a committee and as a council, we approved this expedited path for all items to race through during the emergency. for all items to race through during the emergency. And this essentially pulls that back for items that are initiated by council or the mayor. I guess, so, so, so first, we would be going back to the original rule. And then secondly, as I understand it, as Rick has repeatedly told me, on orders of the day, in terms of that vote that requires two thirds, typically, part of the time I was mayor, that was taken without public comment. And I'd probably go back to that so that we can get to the urgent items we need to on our calendar, so that we're not having to deal with hours and hours of public comment about what gets on the agenda, what doesn't, and simply go straight to the items that are obviously of, on the agenda already. So those are the two basic changes. I'm sorry, Johnny, I think you're, you're on mute.
I think Dev taught me how to press the spacebar and now I'm using it all the time. Okay, so is, is that the way we see things? So basically, it's going back to, for city council and what have you, it's going back to what we used to practice? And in, in large part?
Yeah, we're pulling back the portion relating to proposals that come from us as opposed to proposals that come from staff.
Okay, so, all right, I, I just don't want to be taken by surprise like we did this, this last session where we, we were having to understand the constitutionality of Monday evening, right before a council meeting. That's what I want to get away from. And if this accomplishes it, then I'm willing to make that motion if that's, if that's what our legal department says.
Yeah, I think it will to address that, and I assure your concern. So is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I just have one other comment on this. This doesn't, this doesn't address the, the dropping of memos. I'm assuming that's still in place, the prior, that a blue memo with, with more than one requires 72 hours, that a single council member memo can be dropped at any time before the meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Seconding with the, the committee here. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to ask that question, actually. And then the other question I had was for item number two. If the mayor, city manager, and city attorney don't concur that it should go on orders of the day, does it go through rules then for the following week?
That would be the, that would be the standard practice is if, if it's not approved to go on orders of the day, then it follows the regular process of going through the Rules Committee.
Okay. And then do we need to make part of our motion to a clarification about our recommendation on the multiple signer memos as well?
I think, I think so long as you, you keep the regular, the, the standard requirement, we could go ahead and do the resolution that includes that statement.
Okay.
Councilor, Camus?
Sorry, I just want to make sure that this is on the record, too, that we will be, before we take public comment on an item that, that still needs two thirds vote, I just want to make sure that we'll vote on it before we take public comment. I want to make sure that that's in my motion.
So as I understand it from Rick, and Ed, tell me if I've got this wrong. It is not required to hear public comment to vote on orders of the day to add items to the agenda. I had been doing as a matter of practice, simply because, as we often have seen, these items will get, thrown into the community, there'd be a lot of interest generated as a result of that. And to shut public comment down in many ways strikes folks as being undemocratic. What I'm trying to do is, trying to as much as possible, let everybody have a clear expectation early on, that that's not going to be a place for public comment. I know, in fact, in the past, some members of the community had even received word from the clerk, who understandably said, hey, if you want to comment on this, then you can comment on, on orders of the day, because that's what we had been doing. We just want to make sure we're all on the same page now going forward. We're not going to have public comment on orders of the day on adding items to the agenda. We certainly will continue to have it on each item individually that's already on the agenda.
Right, so. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to check in with you. Do I have that right?
Yeah. So the Brown Act doesn't make reference to allowing comments on the orders of the day. In fact, there is a court decision that basically said that you don't have to have comments on orders of the day because it's a legislative act. You're actually just placing items on an agenda. You're not acting other than either placing or not placing an item on an agenda. What ended up happening is during the the transparency era where we were imposing additional requirements on, on our own, the council did adopt a resolution as part of the Rules Resolution, I believe, with the Sunshine Policy, where we indicated that if there was an item to go on orders of the day that was debatable, that would allow public comment, but that's a rule that the council imposed on itself. It's not required under the Brown Act, and in fact, you're not, you don't have to allow it.
Yeah, the reason why I would say, you know, let's just stick to the, stick to the original script of not having public comment on orders of the day is because we're at a moment where I think we want to conserve staff time to focus on urgent issues. And we have, I think, by evidence by the last couple of council meetings, very lengthy meetings already. Okay, any other comments? All right, a motion then is from Councilmember Camus. Let's vote on that motion.
Aranis?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Camus?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
LaCardo?
Hi.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. We're, we're on to item two. I'm sorry, item three, which is Joe Roy's report. Welcome, Joe.
Hello, good afternoon, Joe Roy, City Auditor. So in accordance with the city charter, I'm presenting our monthly report for March. In March, we issued our status of open audit recommendations as of December 30th, or 31st, 2019. We have a number of projects in progress and attached the memos, the status report on our work plan. You'll note that a number of our current audits that were slated to release, or release in April and May are now listed as TBD. A number of our staff in my office, as well as department staff, are all now working on COVID-19 response and recovery work, and we'll be getting back to those when we're, when we can. I say you accept our report, and in addition, please add an audit related to COVID-19 cost documentation to our work plan. So this project is in accordance with our defined role in the city's emergency operations plan and the recovery annex to the plan, which is defined as working with the administration on oversight of incident-related costs, including compliance with federal and state record-keeping procurement audit requirements. And I expect this may be the series, first in a series of small compliance audits, just to ensure that our cost controls surrounding incident-related costs are, are meeting federal and state requirements. And thank you. I'm open to any questions.
Thanks, Joe. Just a quick question. So your entire team's been redeployed for COVID?
About half. Got a couple of people working with the logistics team, one person working with the, the nonprofit assistance group, another team working on situational status. And then I got three people working with the, the recovery groups, the cost documentation. And the other folks are, are sporting other ways. A lot of our projects were actually in the report writing phase, so they can connect, continue as long as, you know, we can take them to a certain place with our internal quality control work and what have you. And then we're just kind of plugging away in that way. And then in touching base with department heads about, you know, when we can kind of get back to these audits, whether they'll just be, you know, whether we can get back to them in a month or two months, or when departments have the bandwidth to kind of put together a response, provide comments with drafts, what have you. So I'm working with the administration on all those.
Okay, thanks. Well, thanks also for all the work on the cost documentation, because we're going to need all that FEMA money we can get. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to touch on that, too, Joe. So the actual auditing of the FEMA documentation is happening in real time. So you're working with all the departments that are involved and making sure that they're filling out the forms accurately and that we're set up to have as much cost recovery as we can. So this is all happening in real time?
Not quite real time. So there's two components. The first component is just looking at, so the city is putting together procedures for, you know, documenting costs. And so we're looking, making sure that the FEMA guidelines, that, that our procedures are, are in alignment with FEMA guidelines. And as I think Leah discussed yesterday, a lot of this information from a FEMA standpoint, they haven't dealt with something of this scale before. So some of the guidance is kind of in flux and they're working on it. So some of it is we're trying to stay on top of these things. The other piece of it is as documentation, or as, you know, the city's putting together its first packages for reimbursement, we'll be looking at what sort of documentation departments have put together. Are they in agreement with the city's procedures as well as those FEMA guidelines? So it's, it's not necessarily real time, but it's as real time as auditing gets.
No, I appreciate that. And I know it's a monumental task. My concern, the reason why I ask that question is if we're not following the proper procedures to, to capture that, those reimbursements, is it going to be very difficult to recreate the scenarios or hours, or even remember all the different tasks that you performed? To get the reimbursement. So we're going to leave a lot of money on the table.
This, this project is actually modeled after some projects we did about a decade ago during the Great Recession, when the the Obama administration passed the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. We did a series of almost real-time audits of, of the city's cost controls, or I'm sorry, that controls the city was putting in place to meet those heightened accountability and transparency requirements. And then we also did one under that, under that, that bill. The city was supposed to report, uh, report it on a quarterly basis, the number of jobs created and retained. And so this is one where we were going in before the city even submitted anything. We were looking at the, the methodologies surrounding how these things, how these jobs were calculated. We're looking at the form, the format which they were going to be submitting. And so we're kind of modeling our work after that work we'd done before, which is, as I said, it's, it's not quite real time, but it's as close to real time as we can get in terms of following the guidance that is changing. It's, it's going to be a challenge. And then, of course, as Lee mentioned yesterday, that's, you know, FEMA is just one source of potential funding. So that's why I said it could be a series of audits, because right now we're looking at FEMA guidelines. Down the road, we could be looking at something else. I'll be working with Jim and Lee and, and the other folks figuring out where we can provide the most value from an audit standpoint. It's better that we're looking at it now than FEMA comes back in a year from now and wagging their finger at us. So that's the way we're looking at it.
Great. Thank you, Joe.
All right, other questions from the committee? Mr. Beekman?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Beekman.
Hi, you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, for this issue, I wanted to talk about, you usually have tech, technology deployment issues at this time at the monthly audit report from 2016. I feel there was a reliance with the, with this technology deployment report that, you know, it, it had a reliance on Sunshine Ordinance ideas, which I felt was, it was a little, a little gem for yourselves in how to do, talk about and work with these issues. And I've been late to understand that. And, you know, I wanted to just offer that to the entire community, that, you know, there's a website portal on your city website that talks about the Sunshine Ordinance and all of its rough draft and notes ideas that are all in a, in a space on the city website that I really invite the community to look over. And it's, it's very interesting work, and it can really help what is the openness issue and what you're, what you're dealing with the sunshine questions right now. I think something's very simple, and I hope, I hope you can work that out for yourself. And I wanted to remind yourself that I, I misquoted a, a legal reference. It's, it's section 2.3, Part 4B, Subcategory 1, that nicely explains, I think, your situation, and you don't even have to suspend the, the Sunshine Ordinance. I think was a question among people like from San Jose Spotlight Newspaper and, and places like that, that you don't have to suspend the ordinance at all. And however you're working on it, good luck with this issue, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, back to the committee. Any questions? Okay.
Motion to approve the city auditors' report?
Second. On that motion, is there any objection? Opposition? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on then. Thank you all. Thank you, Joe. We'll take up item number four, which is a resolution condemning xenophobia against the Asian-American Islander community stemming from COVID crisis-related actions. I don't know if Councilman Pross, I don't think he's joined us. He is on.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, you are there. Okay, welcome, Councilman Pross.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'd love to do, but I don't know if there's any public comment I wanted to speak on, if you want to do that first, otherwise I'm.
Yeah, I'm taking a look here. It looks like we have one person like to speak. You'd like to wait for that?
I'm happy to go first. Either way, however you want to run it.
Okay, Mr. Beekman?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, to try to give my attempts at a speech on xenophobia. Thanks for your patience. For all the people in China and this world who have possibly brought this, who have possibly brought this pandemic on accidentally or intentionally, there are many more people within China and other countries in the world who have not. I feel anger should not be so much directed towards China, which should be openly questioned at this time. But in whatever your feelings in the obvious planned events of 9/11 and the US economic meltdown in 2008, forever changing the world, I hope a larger question can be asked at this time, that as a human society, what do, what, why do we keep allowing shock doctrine disaster capitalism practices and large-scale social planning and economic infrastructure building based on methods of mass death and harm? PG&E and the oil fuel bombings of Saudi Arabia of 2019 are the most recent examples of this mentality. From all of this, there has been a developing movement with ideas of sustainability and long-term social planning in the name of peace, positive energy, and reasoning, openness, accountability, and good democratic practices that politely ask for an eventual end to shock doctrine disaster capitalism practices. We're at a time to define sustainability, more positive, life-affirming ideas and practices than, than mass death and its accounting books tried to plan for the human future of our collective societies. To conclude, my own lifestyle may not be a good example, but I feel there are, there are healing ways that can more easily address the many new economic and social changes in front of us at this time. To offer politeness, to offer a positiveness of life seems a more honest concept of how to talk about the future sustainability and can also help to address and alleviate xenophobic thought now and in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Pross?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor, and the Rules Committee for discussing this item today. And for the joint memo as well that was added to, which I'll all move both memos at the end of this. I wanted to just speak a little bit to this point, because I think it's extremely important considering the large Asian Pacific Islander population that we have here in the Bay Area. And it's been one of the really unfortunate bad side effects of COVID-19, that we've seen this blatant discrimination against our Asian-American community members and all across the country, really. You know, it's, it's also been even more hurtful to see that national leaders, as we know our president, but not just him, other political figureheads take part in, on this divisiveness, the xenophobia, dubbing the, the virus COVID-19 as the Wuhan or the Chinese virus. Other hurtful terms that we've heard from figureheads like kung flu. We've seen in, in countless videos, whether social media, YouTube, people in comment sections, obviously, the, the association now, as well as on news channels of the pandemic, associating it to the Asian-American community and trying to proclaim responsibility on them and worship. We have seen direct acts of violent discrimination across the country against people of our API community. And I do want to say thank you to our, our police department, our police chief for stepping up very quickly in sending out a message to denounce that hate and xenophobia. And in fact, put together, our chief put together tremendous video, bringing together officers to help from our API community. And so I appreciate our, our local stance. I think unfortunately, because we've seen what's come out of political figureheads, I thought it was really important that we as elected officials make a collective stance as well. And this is one of those, you know, unfortunate. This is one of those, you know, unfortunate sort of collateral damages that is coming out of COVID-19, something that should not happen at all. We know we saw it early on in regards to Asian-owned businesses with a sharp decline in business, and that's something as well that we have tried, I know here in our San Jose business community, to try and to uplift, especially our Asian-owned businesses that were seeing direct impact because of this. And I know resolution and the related actions that we have here, I appreciate that, on working on this. We'll send a resounding statement to our Asian-American community members and our business owners that make up 35% of our population, and we'll let them know that we, the city, stand by them, and will not tolerate any of this form of discrimination against them. And again, do thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and Councilmember Depp for their memo as well, and I'll, I'll move both of them. Well, I'm sorry, I can't move both of them, I'd like for you to move. Thanks.
We'll take the suggestion, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Camus?
Well, as, as the only Asian-born member of city council, I appreciate this, and I also, you know, I, I started my career in politics as the head of the Human Relations Commission for Santa Clara County after 9/11, and I do really think that this is valuable. We need to do a lot more than, than just passing a memo, I think we need to show, show our community that they're welcome, and, and I've, and I've, you know, been living this, especially for the last month, we've been trying to encourage people to frequent Chinese food restaurants, and I think a lot of these Chinese-owned businesses have felt the sting of this, and appreciate this, and, well, I don't want to take Chappie's thunder away, so I won't make the motion, but I, I'll do it this second, if you'll allow me.
Vice Mayor, you, you couldn't make the motion because you were on mute.
I'll try that again. I'd like to make a motion to move our memo.
Very well.
Thank you.
I was, I was using Dev's spacebar technique as well.
Yeah, she's got us all hooked, yeah. Other comments or questions? Okay.
I wanted to come in, sorry, guys.
Yes, Councilor. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Pross, for bringing this forward. All right, let's vote on Vice Mayor's, oh, I'm sorry, let me just check, yeah, we've already heard public comment. Great, okay, Vice Mayor's motion, let's, let's vote.
Aranis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Camus?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
LaCardo?
Hi.
Okay, great. Then we are on finally to item five, which is Almaden Winery Building. Councilmember Camus?
I actually would like to drop this memo as, until we can get past the COVID virus situation, and I'll have it re-agendized at a later date, if the, if the committee will allow me to drop it.
Yeah, that's fine, let me just also suggest, couldn't we just say this should go forward and come back in a few months to the, I can't remember if this was to go to the council, it was to go to the council, come back in a few months to go to the council when staff is ready, so at least it would be in the, in the pipeline?
I'd like that, absolutely, and I'm willing to thank, to thank the mayor for his commitment to, to at least preserve, try to preserve this historic building, it's one of the oldest buildings in San Jose. I've recently heard that the staff of the, his San Jose history has been kind of furloughed, and I didn't want to put burdens on them in that light, but I'd love to have it come back, especially, I was talking to them today before I leave office, it would be a dream of mine to preserve this building.
Sure.
For future generations to enjoy.
Okay, Dave, is that all right?
Make a motion to put it back.
Second.
Thank you. Dave, is that all right if it comes back to us in the fall?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. Any comments? Councilmember Aranis, thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm, I'm going to support that, I just would like to see any financial impacts, a report on that, or is any, any implications to a financial impact regarding the Almaden Winery Building? So it's, if there is any implications, please, if you can include that in your report.
Okay, Councilmember Camus?
Yeah, I really, didn't really want to speak on this, but the, the purpose of this was to have a nonprofit group raise money to help the city keep the building up, and it was hopefully to be, allow this group to fundraise on behalf of the city. And, yeah, we, we definitely want to make sure that the financial impacts are heard, but, but the whole purpose was to try to attract outside funds to help the city restore this building, and I just want to be clear, and I'd love to see it come back in the fall, and, and whenever the history San Jose staff has been rehired and could take this challenge on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, other comments? Okay, let's vote on the motion.
Aranis?
Yes.
Davis?
Hi.
Camus?
Hi.
Jones? Hi.
LaCardo?
Hi.
Thank you, everybody, we're on to open forum now. Are there any comments from the community? Mr. Bickman?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, I just checked to make sure, and thank you. Okay, for open forum, I was, as usual, very impressed with your attempts of what you tried to talk about, about the housing issues last night. I guess I've learned, you know, you know, there may be ways you can talk more about it and more in depth. To try to restate what I tried to say last night, I think there can be, you know, ways of really good communication for everybody this summer. I hope there can be ideas of trust, and the ideas of having several meetings between all sides in the next following months with several meetings. I think, I hope everyone can trust that idea, and I think together, pulling all of your ideas together and not to compete with each other and feel fearful that one side is getting more over another, that's not at all the case, it's how we can all come out ahead with this and all gain something important, and you as government can really facilitate that well, and I think you're ready to offer really good choices for all of us, but we just have to trust the process, and we have to want that openness kind of thing, you know, and, and it's with that, I think we can move mountains, you know, we can do amazingly good work, where everyone can get what they need at this time. And so I hope, I hope you can go forward with the meeting process, and that, and to not, for people to not fear that someone's trying to gain something over someone else, that's not what's the issue here. I mean, we're all suffering, and there's ways that we can all work that's the best for everybody, and I hope we can try to work in those terms at this time, and, and as a side note, I meant, well, I think I'll just leave it there, so thank you for your understanding. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, the meeting's adjourned.